February 23rd, council made a call to order. Would you please stand as pleasant allegiance and move on side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I didn't say that.
It's true.
Excuse me. All right. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from September the 9th.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes that were presented.
Second.
It has been moved in seconds to approve the minutes from September the 9th. Meeting, would the clerk please call over?
Khar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be approval of the statement of bills paid in amount of $271,890.95.
Make a motion to approve the statement of bills in the amount of $271,890.95.
Second.
It has been moved in seconds to approve the statement of bills paid. Would the clerk please call over?
Khar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda, we request your comments from the public. Would you please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is David Streit, and I live at 1396 South 104th Street. I put all my compliments at the end, so if you guys cut me off, it's your loss. No, I'm here partially representing 4-H. I have three kids that are in 4-H, and every year they do a national 4-H week where they try to come up with a community service project. And I had suggested to do a cemetery cleanup at a study point, a cemetery which is right next to my property. And I told them, hey, it'd be great because I have pretty easy access down there. We can go down there, you know, pick up branches. And since I made the mistake of suggesting the idea, they put me in charge of it. So I reached out to Mr. Daniel and asking for maybe if we could coordinate it with the community, and he's working on that. So I just wanted to preemptively thank him for that joint effort. So thank you guys for that support. Also, I know there's been a lot of squawking about codes enforcement and stuff. And I just wanted to throw, I know, you know, people bring up problems, but I wanted to bring a solution. I know a lot of people get angry about codes enforcement. We have a kind of a crazy history of codes enforcement in our city. But I had my own run-in. Actually, I got a letter from the city saying, hey, there's some, you know, you got some gravel in the road. And I drove down there, I couldn't even find it, and I called back the gal, I forget her name, said, can you come down and meet me? Because I don't see this gravel anywhere, right? And she said, well, maybe it went away. Which is okay, but I was just thinking, as a recommendation, if there is a codes infraction that's written on it, maybe take a photo of it? Because that would help, because if I could have seen what she was talking about, you know, that would have helped me identify if the problem is still there, what I could do about it. So that's all that. Anyways, I just didn't, I didn't want to give you guys my vote of confidence, because I know, you know, I've seen a lot of you, and actually, you guys have been up there for a while. So maybe I don't agree with everything you say, but I, one thing I can say for sure, though, is I know you guys have the right, and you have the interest of the city in mind. You know, your heart's in the right place. So I do, I do want to thank you for your service. I know you got some big decisions coming up. So just wanted to thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the compliment. We barely got that.
Well, you know what, enough I can, thank you for stepping up and taking it on to clean up something in the city. That's, that's, that's much appreciated. And I'm sure that if there's anything that we're able to coordinate, like with what you said with Zach, that we will. Thank you very much.
And October 12th, is that date, correct?
Yeah, October 12th. The kids, we're doing it from 9:00 to noon, so. That's for you.
That's awesome. Thank you.
If you don't mind, Zach, for you, because the kids still use the same piles we had from the last panel.
The same piles?
Yes.
Yes. We'll just add to those, and ostensibly, one day, it will not be green, and we can wear those.
No problem.
Are there any others? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to item number four. Consider resolution 2019-14 consenting to this assignment of a lease agreement and related bond documents in connection with city's industrial revenue bond, series 214.
Mayor, you will notice that Scott Anderson is not with us tonight.
Yes, we noticed that.
He apparently had a birthday and is spending some time with his lovely wife for his birthday. So he asked me to hang with him, stepped in and covered this for you. We've had a number of these in the past where we do an assignment of lease. In this particular case, the original project was JDC Edwardville 1 LLC, which was Jones Development. They initially developed the property at 9525 as well as 9601. As you recall, actually during that process, Alpha Broder consolidated operations and actually took the entire facility, leased the entire facility. Originally was built up to four tenants, but they took the whole thing up in there ever since. As is often the case, it then got transferred to Woodend Industrial 1 LLC, and then Woodend 1 gave it to, or is now interested, or sold its interest in E.W. Woodend LLC. And now it's going to exit here at 9525 Woodend LLC. All of these are limited liability companies that we've dealt with. In this particular case, it will have no impact on any of the terms of the existing IRBs or any of the lease, and we anticipate that Alpha Broder will continue to be the leaseholder in this project. I would just note for reference that in 2019, the pilot on this project will be over $245,000. And when you compare that to what we were bringing in total taxes, that's nearly 2% of all the taxes paid in this city for this one project. So it has a significant positive impact to our community. And that actually is on a, it grows every year by one and a half percent. So in 2024, they'll be paying around $264,000, or over $264,000. Now, that is total taxes off taxes, and we receive about 25% of that. It is our recommendation to approve resolution 2019-14 consenting to the assignment of a lease agreement and all of the related bond documents. Happy to try to answer questions on this, the best I can.
Will the use remain the same?
Yes, yes. There's no changes Alpha Broder, the tenant. They, like most of these deals, they'll often, they sell these improvements. The reason they're selling is because they got a good tenant, and it's really an investment in a long-term project. So they'll continue to make these payments, and continue to make the ongoing payments through the process of the ARB. No impact from a city standpoint for cost that borne by the city, we can keep the same tax payments going on.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to make up resolution 2019-14.
Say it. It has been moved in second to approve resolution 2019-14. Would the clerk please call over?
Khar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be consider authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with Payment Management LLC for 2019 crack seal project.
Good evening, City Council. Item number five on the tonight's agenda is for the 2019 crack seal project. City staff performed evaluations in Edwardville, Wasaw, July and August. The evaluations noted several of the streets and parking lots that needed various additions and maintenance and needed crack sealing. It's been a while since we've done a legitimate crack seal on our roads. Project was put together and bid to receive on September 11th for this year's project. Below are the four bidders that submitted into the project. Payment Management LLC goes to a low bidder, an amount of $94,954.14. And that was about $22,500 on the engineer's estimate for this project. For that amount of money, we're going to crack seal about nine and a half miles and two city parking lots, the Riverfront parking lot and also the Community Center parking lot. Payment Management, to my knowledge, hasn't, LLC hasn't worked with the city of Edwardville in the past before, but they're very well-known in the Kansas City metro area for preventative maintenance on the streets. They perform a lot of crack sealing in this area, city and all around the metro area. I personally have worked with them for years in other cities I've worked with, and they've always been a good contractor, and they've always been a good project sometimes, and we like it. This project is going to be funded through the special sales tax, and the low bid again is $94,954.14. And staff would like the City Council to consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Payment Management LLC for crack sealing in these streets and parking lots. And if you'd like, Zach actually has a couple of prototypes and some maps, so you can kind of see the structures that are going to be crack sealing on this project. They'll do the new section of Kansas Avenue, 102nd Street, 104th Street, a lot of waves and cars, 9th Street, a portion of Lake Grant, 98th Street, and Woodend down south.
Tammy, if it's selected, how soon could they begin?
Oh, well, we just have to get the project, I mean, the contract documents together, and they have about 10 to 14 days to develop those in the bindings. And he said the first week of October, second week of October, they'll be allowing you to start.
What parking lots were new?
Community Center and Riverfront parking lot. The other two are what passed through, so like, or crack seal. And then we also have, estimated crack seal is kind of a, kind of a shot in the dark. We have a formula that we utilize, so just in case we have underestimated, we actually have additional streets that will crack seal, like Edwardville Drive, if we have more material than we have the streets.
I'm actually surprised to see that Kansas Avenue, the brand-new project that we just completed, already needs attention.
It's pretty standard to start crack sealing every four to five years, a four to five-year cycle, and there are some transfer cracks and marginal cracks that should be, you know, crack sealed on that street. And really, a good preventive maintenance cycle is to keep the neighbors in good condition moving forward, so we really should, you know, be more proactive. That's what I'm going to try to start doing here, and then every four to five years, to keep the water from getting created and whatever.
I would say in the previous city I was at, we would, at the end of the maintenance period, which was typically two years, we could crack seal them at that point, just to take care of any, you know, seams or any of those types of things. It really helped longevity of the project, right? Because the number-one killer of asphalt road is water getting underneath.
I think we're paying for pound of material, so that's just, you know, on those streets like Kansas Avenue, where there's not much, you know, cracks to actually seal. Those four boards are just going to be walking a lot and not sealing a lot, so.
The dotted streets, is that the additional street that budget allows?
Um, actually, the purple street.
Well, I'm sorry, purple.
Can you say the purple?
Oh, I see.
How it starts, yeah. The red streets, the red streets are the streets we're going to kind of do, and then the green are the parking lots, and then the purple will be added on if the budget allows. That's kind of the terminology we use. So just in, you know, this crack seal material is ordered in bulk, and, yeah, we just don't want it sitting there. We don't want to ship it back, so we want to have kind of the streets for a minimum charge.
I'll, I'll once again jump on my bandwagon about the Northeast not getting attention again. Kansas Avenue is great, but 98th Street, I mean, nothing north of K-32 all the way to our city limit up north is, again, not getting, probably the worst road in our city.
Actually, I did a pavement evaluation, so we'll be coming back. We're using DHC Roads to GIs that, so you can all FCM out to see exactly how all the streets were rated next to each other. And so this is, you know, really following the industry standard for crack sealing streets in the five to seven passer rating limits. Trying to keep those streets in good condition before they fall well below, and to need a repair like 98th Street, N stake Road, and 96th.
And I understand, I get that. I mean, I understand that you gotta take care of, you can't ignore it, because then it becomes a 98th Street, and I get that.
We'll go bring this up to you within the next two months.
Sometime, we're going to have to address those other issues.
Well, and we did, as you recall, you know, we did put in our bond program, a, you know, to go in and do preliminary, preliminary planning for 98th Street from Kansas Avenue, which is ignored, and as well as any necessary acquisition of right of, and that doesn't fund rebuilding the road, and it's the first step in that process. It makes it quite honestly more eligible for, you know, future federal funding as a possibility. Not saying we did, but it gives you additional points when you have those rates.
And if some of those roads, especially 98th Street, just works, you know, we're not going to have, you know, a million dollars per mile to re-contract them at this, at this point. And so hopefully, with the next year's program, we can see some, maybe blade patching and chip sealing, at least to smooth out the surfaces and improve the reliability of the project. So that's hopefully going to be spring of next year.
Is this amount already included in our budget for this year?
We set aside, we've been setting aside about $100,000 in the special savings tax fund, which, given it was passed, it had three components, streets was one of them. So this portion will be paid for out of the special savings.
What, 25% of the special savings?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to re-authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Payment Management LLC for an amount not to exceed $94,954.14.
Say it. It has been moved in second to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Payment Management LLC for the amount not to exceed $94,954.14. Would the clerk please call over?
If there's extra left over, could we, maybe have you come to us to request where it needs to be done? Maybe that could solve some of the issues, or maybe help a little bit up on 98th and Riverview.
And I don't even, I'm not saying 98th and River.
Well, I'm just saying, in that area, where there's other.
Probably south of Schwartz.
I know 98th Street is, but if there would be money left over, where it could be directed to go to specific sponsors.
We can look at, you know, I can break back the, like I said, the V- hole map to show you actually the pavement completion ratings, and I'll show you and break down, you know, what. It's really in our best interest to save our money as you're crack sealing. Sometimes when streets are, you know, past the point of no recharge, you're not really getting value for your dollar.
Putting lipstick on new.
The other thing I would just say is, once they start work, they're going to be here fairly short period of time. I don't know what they're told, they, I mean, crack seal goes pretty darn, you know, they get in an area and start going, and they're not going to say. Well, I'm just saying that, yes. If there's, you know, a good amount left, you know, let's figure out where to put it, rather than just let them walk around.
Oh, no.
Well, certainly, it will not be up to their discretion, it'll be our discretion. Based on our bigger job.
It's being directed by Tammy anyway in public work, so, and I think the council needs to jump into that wagon.
We, last year or the year before, and I'm thinking that it was Shawnee that we partnered up with, and they brought out a machine, is that right? What was it?
The blow patch machine.
Is that not a, is that, did that not go well? I don't know if we ever, if we, if you recorded back, you probably did, and we probably heard about, but I've slept a couple times since then, and I forgot. So how did that process go?
You know, we can talk about that when we bring the whole program back. Blow patching is really a cosmetic fix, in my opinion. We started that, and Shawnee came out, now uses it. It's a quick fix. It's not a long-term fix. You know, right when we did the blow patch, we did it down Riverview, we did it down 98th Street, we came down here 4th Street, did a little more parking lot. You know, we spent a whole day, it was nice for Shawnee to partner with us, and bring their staff equipment to do that for us. But the reality is, after about eight months, the rigidity is just the same. You still have your thump, 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 thump down 98th Street on all of your transfer cracks.
Would it be, is it a city of our size, would it be a thought to have our own crack seal machine?
Probably not, because it's very labor-intensive, and you need active working traffic control, because it's a moving operation. So you constantly have to be moving those signs, and you have to have a truck behind, you have to have a gentleman in front blowing out the cracks, you gotta have the truck guy driving the truck. You gotta have an applicator putting the material down, you gotta have a couple of guys squeegeeing, then you have the truck behind putting down the soapy water to keep it from tracking. And then you have guys behind doing the traffic control. We have thirty staff members, and we couldn't even staff that. However, I am, just so you know, we're actually are working with the Public Works Directors Group that I'm associated with, that we're going to try to partner with some of the larger cities to incorporate a cooperative purchase agreement on their contracts, so we can get, so we can leverage quantities and get a little better price on our end going moving forward on like crack, all maintenance contracts. Like a millon overlay and a crack seal, so when they, you know, when they, the big boys like BUDG or KCK or Shawnee or somebody close to here, and they get really good quantities on the backend, and they would, you know, go ahead and honor those prices for us, just making charges, a mobilization, we'd be very good for them here. So we're kind of working with that as a way to try to get lower prices for us in all the towns.
It's similar to what I would say, you know, when we go out and use like an HGAC or something. Those are cooperative purchases, and typically, a city or a group of cities actually are the bidder. So there's some city out there that is the, same thing when we buy police cars, you know, it's done through the city. A lot of times it's a Leth, Over Park, Independent, they're the actual bidder, and they put in there at, you know, this preferred pricing, so editors can basically buy into their agreement. Basically, what we're talking about on the public works side.
If we're all done with questions, would the clerk please call over?
Khar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Okay, this is a good one. Consider rejecting all bids for 2019 state and project when you just passed.
Well, it's kind of, this is kind of confusing.
Yeah. I know there's a good answer, I'm just.
There's an amended memo.
I gotta throw that out.
Yeah, there's an amended memo. Hopefully, you all have your packet, so I'm going to try to walk everybody through this. So the city of Edwardville has listed bids for the 2019 street maintenance project. The bid opening was September 18th. That project this year included multiple locations, I think we've maybe talked about throughout the year. First one was the intersection 105 Terrace and Shelton for pavement repairs. The other one, the next one was storm drainage repairs of 102nd Terrace and Ed Hill. And then we have some street values that are occurring on 8th Street and 96th Street, and so there's pulled-up patches there, but it's actually going to be cheaper to do pulverizing in place and just overlaying those little sections of work. So we went out for bid for that work. Two contractors submitted bids, and they are outlined on the agenda memo. The low bid was Jeremy Coe Force Enterprises for $129,155. And as you will quickly see, that was about $51,000 over the engineer's estimate for that work. So the bids can be significantly higher than we anticipated, and we really think it's a combination of multiple reasons. One, first and foremost, we have smaller quantities on this project. You know, we had unique positions, unique locations, so we had paving at one location and next stormwater drainage at another. We tried to combine all those into one project, and it kind of really didn't work for us, and then we had the over-izing in place and overlaying. So we didn't have large quantities to really entice any of the contractors to come into our, to our project. The bid items were pretty varied, too, since it was stormwater pavement. And then we also, you know, this year, we might have an awful wet year, so we, you know, there's a lot of delays in all of the projects around here. I mean, I think K-32 was actually supposed to be done, probably beginning July, you know, we're not naming it September. So a lot of contractors, especially paving contractors, are behind from the other projects, so they're not out there completely bidding for asphalt overlay at this point. And so we think that's why the projects came in like they did. So then we kind of regrouped, and we're trying to decide what we're going to do, and then our initial thought was on the first level, we're rejecting all bids. Because certainly, we weren't going to go with anything that's $5,000 over an engineer's estimate. But then we, you know, looked a little bit closer. How the project was laid out is the bid proposal was laid out into fourteen different bid items, and they were actually grouped. So 1 through 6 was actually 405 Terrace and Shelton under the paving. 7 through 12 was the stormwater drainage, and then the last two, 13 and 14 were for the street repairs, the low bidding, the over-izing in place. So it was really easy to look at the different prices that were bid for each type of project. So basically, bid items 7 through 12 are for that 102nd Terrace and Ed Hill storm drainage repairs. And those combined, bid item 7 through 12 totaled $27,910. And those, that was a very competitive bid. That was about $1,752 less than our engineer's estimate for those five bid items. So at this point, you know, we reached out, I reached out to the low bid contractor, and I said, you know, we're looking at rejecting all the bids unless you're interested in doing, you know, the storm drainage portion. And it just so happens that Jeremy Coe Force Enterprises is a storm drainage contractor, and he was very interested in doing that portion of the contract, and doing the partial award of the contract. So that's kind of where we are right now. Just a little background, the first phase of that 102nd Terrace and Ed Hill was done back in 2017, where Musselman Hall was our contractor. We had surface water that's draining down that subdivision and that intersection, and you guys rebuilt it and redone it for the last fifteen years. In 2017, we actually put an area inlet in that, we did a change order for Musselman Hall. We put a drop inlet in that corner of 102nd Terrace, and we put in that under, a crossroad pipe. The thought being, the next phase of that was going to be tacking on to that pipe and taking it, and taking all the water down with the creek. We just didn't have the funds two years ago to do that. And so, again, you know, we looked at all the bid items, reached out to the contractor, he's very interested in doing that, and we really think that at this time, that is a good thing for us to move forward on. To take those bid items 7 through 12 out of this contract, since it was definitely bid, and to go ahead and award those on this project. This project will be awarded out of special highway funds. As I indicated, the low bid for the project was Jeremy Coe Force Enterprises for $129,155, which was above the engineer's estimate, and that will not be awarded. What we are going to award is the $27,910 to the low bidder, which was Jeremy Coe Force Enterprises. And so we'd like to, the City Council, to consider awarding a partial bid for bid item 7 through 12 for the 2019 street maintenance project, and reject bid items 1 through 6, 13 and 14.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
And I'm sure this is probably already a man theoretically legal, but if we would have just bid 7 through 12, there might have been five other people that bid that, because it's a smaller job, that couldn't have done the larger project, you know, the whole thing, that's in the four squares of, you know, scope of work. And, and I don't know that I've, I mean, and if it's right, I guess, but I never knew that you could pull out a section of a contract and then say, we're going to award this, this part of it because you were low on, on a section of it. I, I think it's the totality of the bid that needs to be rejected, and if you're going to put out 7 through 12, then 7 through 12 needs to be bid standalone on its own.
Well, I would say it all about that, right? But when we put bids together, one of the statements always is issued is that, that we can reject any and all bids in any portions of those. So we do have that right. A bidder could, and it happens sometimes, they may only bid a portion of the bid items. And so I would say, typically, we do like to have one bidder, because it's a lot easier. But you could have an award where 1 through 6 could go to company A, and 7 through 12, whatever, could go to company B in the same bid. to company B in the same bid. So we do put that in our bid documents that, that we do have that right to reject.
So that could be like three separate jobs is what you're being, not one. It's not one or none.
Right. That is, I, I.
It could be three separate bidders that might win one contract.
Got it.
You know, technically you could do it on a line item, you would never say, we're gonna give you line item 7 and you line item 8, you line item 9, yeah, just, yeah, just with making.
Right.
Wouldn't be in the benefit of the city, but in this case. Now, the bidder could have said.
No, that he wasn't interested, yes.
That I'm not interested and we would reject.
Just for reference, the second low bid, the only other bid for, for those saying bid item 7-12 was fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. For those saying, and then our engineer's estimate for that was twenty-nine thousand, six sixty-two. So, you know, I, I felt like we really did do our due diligence and, and reached out to our city engineer who knows the bids all around the metro area for all the projects that are going on. Um, you know, and they're the ones who provide us the engineer's estimate. And so, you know, we did discuss it with him, what his thought was moving forward. And he said, he thinks that's a very good competitive price to get that storm drainage for that. And that's the reason we're bringing it to you.
Could you tell me how much the items 1-6 for Shelton, I know that's been an ongoing concern that you guys have been working on, how far off was that section?
Well, for, well, the engineer's estimate, we'll just round up, even numbers, the engineer's estimate for that, paving was twenty-five thousand dollars for the curb and gutter paving to, to, on the water this year. The low bid was forty-four thousand, six, and the next low bid was about seventy, oh, five. And, and the issue with that is you really don't, we don't want to go out ourselves and hire a network contractor and a paving contractor for that because the, the curb and gutter all has to work with the paving. So we need, we need to get, you know, a good paving contractor in here who's gonna be responsible for making all of that drainage flow to that northwest corner, to that curb inlet. Um, and I, and we are reaching out, I did reach out to other, um, cities and will next a dust have a milliner overlay contract out for bid right now? And we really thought we were gonna be able to piggyback off of their contract because they always have that property purchasing clause in their contract. But what are the odds of the one time that I needed it and he sent me the contract, they didn't have it in there? So we wanted to do that. But next year, we're gonna look at, you know, partnering, you know, putting that property purchasing so we can get that intersection done, you know, as soon as possible next term.
Do you anticipate with, with 7-12 that it will be the final phase and solve the problem?
Oh, certainly. Yes, absolutely.
Cause we have been wrestling with that for a long time.
I think since before I was here, yes. You know, we already have the catch base and we already have the road pipe, we're just gonna tack on, we're gonna get another inlet in the right away and we're gonna put another pipe, both of the drainways take it right down to the grid. Uh, put in, pour the concrete, so I guess that'll take all the water from that corner and take it under the river. So the water will be off the road and go into the road.
The, the problem we have with the water there, you know, heavy rains, it's still going to be in the curb and gutter section. So when it's raining hard, there's enough flow that it'll sheet flow across the intersection, get in the gutters and get down. But as the rain stops and slows and, and we still have water coming out of the ground there, that's where it comes down and then there's just no grade and it just kinda sets and pools. Putting the curb inlet gave it a place to get in, but right now the pipe's just stubbed out and so it can't, you know, it can't go anywhere. So I think when you see the, the low flow water situations, which is what's caused the problems in the past, that that's what it's gonna grow. Big heavy rains, uh, you know, you're still gonna have, you're still gonna have water in the curb and gutters flowing around that intersection. This isn't, you know, a full storm drainage where it's gonna take all the water off all the roads up there and put it down this cold rain. We've got pipes, so it's, it's, it's not like twenty-four, thirty-six in a big storm.
So that I'm clear on what the motion is gonna have to be, so then, so the council is here, you're gonna reject?
I think the recommendation would be for the city council to consider awarding a partial bid.
Oh, just forget about rejecting, but just go with staff recommendation on the very last sentence?
Yes, 7-12 and rejecting bid items 1-6, 13 and 14.
And then to award a partial bid of bid items 7-12 not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and reject items 1-6, 13 and 14.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second, I'm not gonna repeat it. If there are no more questions with the clerk, please go over.
K-Hart?
Yes.
Mawat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stice?
Yes.
That was confusing, but we got it cleared out again. Okay, next item on the agenda, consider authorizing the bid award for personal protective equipment for fire protection items not covered in the 2018 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program.
Chief?
Mayor, council members, as you all recall, last January, we entered into a regional grant, won quite a bit of money, bought a whole lot of air pack equipment. Part of the grant was not funded with additional air pack equipment such as the quick pack, void sample fires, a tool adapter that's necessary for us to use to do quickly, air packs with our existing airbags and air chisels, as well as the pack tracker device. We did have excess funding from the grant that bought a good substantial portion of what we had left over on the list list. However, these are still items that need to be filled out from that original purchase that we talked about. In August of 2018, under Resolution 2018-19, when you accepted the award, we also brought the point about that later day we'd be back to purchase. But through the process of the grant, funding process, had to use all these expenditures on a little delay to get it out there. It was a big project management, but we're back in front tonight, asking to purchase the items that include, like I said, the red pack, which is a separate breathing air apparatus that's used in a bag to do the firefighter sound. Void sample fires, the SCBA face pieces, so we can try to hear each other so it doesn't sound like we're in a Star Wars movie. The tool adapter, as well as the pack tracker, with the pack tracker chips, we're already installed air packs as the standard, um, with the Scott three, uh, the Scott A pitch three that we bought. It's a handheld device, it's similar to the radar tracker. So if somebody is motionless for thirty seconds and purchased their ass twice, it'll sit there and allow a crew to instead of having to do a large area search, narrow down based off of a handheld device to give the firefighter quick. Those are the number, those are the items we're purchasing for twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, which is about four thousand dollars cheaper than what we anticipated, seventeen thousand dollars to approach the council of last year. The price still may go down, however, the bidder that sold us the air packs did, were a sole source requirement for this bid. Specific nature of the Scott air packs did by from a Scott distributor. Our vendor that awarded the grant last year honored the grant prices from last year's process for this year's purchase fees. So in conclusion, staff recommends the city council authorize the, the award of twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars for the Inslee Emergency Services for this miscellaneous SCBA breathing apparatus. Any further questions? Mayor, make the motion that we authorize investment of twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars in our fire department for the equipment that the chief mentioned.
Second.
It has been moved in second to authorize the purchase of personnel protective equipment from municipal emergency services in an amount of twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Could the court please go over?
K-Hart?
Yes.
Mawat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stice?
Yes.
Mike?
Uh, just a couple of things. Number one, I put out for y'all this news release that we put out by Unified Government on, but they're starting up, you know, this adopt this fund, it's a, basically a litter control cleanup program, uh, the three cities are participating in. The county, the UG is taking the lead on that, so they will manage the program as far as assigning some of all those kind of things. Obviously, each of the cities will help support that, whether it's providing some bags or specifically sites and things of that nature. Uh, we have identified several sites where we know we have ongoing problems primarily litter dumping such as 98th Street, a couple other places and then our parks, uh, that has, has options. Obviously, more can be added, but that will be kicking off this weekend. The three mayors will be, uh, having a presentation as you see there at 9:00 AM at, uh, the Leo Aldi Park Metropolitan 29th Street, so Mayor Taddy will be there representing the city. Just wanted you to know about that. Uh, Chief Mathis is not here tonight because he is, you know, Modern Springs, as you would call, Officer Hart is receiving a recognition for life saving at their council, we'll be bringing him back here. I noticed maybe about officers here, uh, they were actively, uh, actively involved in some police activities that you might have noticed when we came in, so I think they're literally ready, uh, so they're doing that. The last thing I wanna say is I wanna thank Zach, uh, and I know it all well as well, for all of his hard work on the festival. Uh, it literally would not happen without him. Uh, he literally was there from finding the sun rose to the last music note played and then some. So I personally wanna say thank you. Others don't make it happen, but, uh, again, you gotta have somebody that takes the lead on it. Not only did that, do that, as chamber president, he had to be actively involved with the, uh, TIBLO days as well. So, uh, you know, I don't know if he wants to become a full-time festival advisor, uh, but he could be well qualified for it, but I'm not sure it'd be a recommendation I would make to him. Thank you, Zach, for your all your work.
Zach, have you got anything?
Just to thank the fire crews and police, Public Works, help a little, a couple of you guys are volunteers, anybody who made it out. The weather was spotty, but people showed up at a good time, so.
Yeah, they all did. Okay, thank you. Chief, quick.
I told you, if you put my name in anything, it has guaranteed rain. It might be no law with this. Um, a few things, there's been a lot of questions about what's going on next door, the fire station, old beautification, and while they have cactuses now in front. Several years ago, there was some fire medical EMT killer in the north station. Current in process, there was some memorial items placed up there that, long before I got here, kinda disappeared, gone to the wayside, died off the trees or anything else. So part of re-beautifying the station is in front, ahead of the barbecue, in the transparency garden. Um, once we get everything laid in, we're working on the memorial plaque out there, we'll invite the families back down and show them how we're still honoring their locals, the different station. Most of that's been done by fire department labor, crews on and off duty, so, um, it's, as you see, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a longer process because we have to work around calls with that. Also, um, we have, again, starting here in the next two weeks, the Red Church with Johnson County Community College Fire Science Kids, we back in the ride-alongs. Um, this year, apparently word's getting out, we had the second largest number of those students riding with us behind one of the much larger community and a much larger county. So we must be doing something right. But out of those students in the past, we've also grown our numbers, we're thirty-five personnel right now, we're now for the time part of kind of volunteers, which is, uh, much larger than what it was when we got here, uh, demographically, uh, here split, we have about twenty-eight percent of our workforce as females, considering nationwide average is about seven percent. Um, that word alone is traveling through the beauty college within the staff itself of if you're looking for a friendly employer, if that is very well geared and suited and takes care of that situation, clear being referred to, to the RACs just from the ride-alongs and are actively talking about the difference of our crews' approach to females and workforce compared to other stations. So that is kudos to everybody that's over there across that street to embrace that challenge that's going on. And then, as we know, Ben will be on board in the middle of next month. He is, again, graciously showed up for the prayer breakfast and showed up that we've been to work on, Paul, and then he's here in the house. Just have the one fire medical nurse collective, we've been through a firefight situation.
Thanks, Chief. Mayor, by the way, for police, I just wanted to say one thing is you might see a face that you used to see here in the past, Jacob Aaron, uh, has, has returned to our department. Uh, he had, uh, he had gone to Modern Springs, uh, I think, maybe missed us a little bit, so we're happy to have him back. I think today was his first day. Oh, Jeff's back there, I'm sorry, I didn't see Jeff, so, uh, I don't know if there's anything else, but, but, uh, we're, we're happy to see a, a funny face back, who's an excellent officer for us to try to have.
Larry Basket Friday, cake, one o'clock.
Say that again. Oh, Larry Basket Friday.
Cake, one o'clock, one o'clock.
You hear that? Retirement of Larry Basket from the fire department, we're gonna have cake here at one o'clock, so please come and join us.
We have lunch, one o'clock on Friday.
Friday, okay, sure. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Dan?
I'm just quickly, I, um, council member Adams had asked me, um, we do have a little issue going on over here, just west of 102nd Street with one of our crossroad pipes, so you may have seen it come down there. We have some streets that are going on, natural crossroad pipe, we're gonna be videoing at, um.
East of, east of 102nd?
West. West of 102nd. Down at the bottom of the hill, where the guardrails are?
East of 102nd.
West. West of 102nd.
Down the lower, I don't know, it's.
Oh, well, I, there's, they're, they got cones set up to the east too.
Well, that might be VPU, the water.
Well, no, I mean, they're over, they're over two holes. I don't know, you might look at that.
Oh.
That's, I, I just noticed it tonight, that's why I thought you were, what you were saying, there's two hole, there's two holes and they got two cones setting on each side of the, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I have to go and look at that.
The driveway, they're gonna.
Not the driveway, um, you'll see it.
Okay, so anyway, our, our issue is a review that I'm aware of, uh, west of 102nd Street, down the bottom by the guardrails, um, the old guardrails, the fallen part. Anyway, it's an old crossfire pipe, the bottom of it's all eaten out. Uh, we're gonna try to do a little bit of work in house, saw cut it and, and catch the roadway a little bit, um, in hopes to, to stave off twice a month, deep crossroad pipe for a couple of years, but just so you know, it's.
It's west. I was just testing it. I forgot to think about it in a second.
I'm like.
Am I losing it?
There's a problem.
It's that way, it's west.
And I call it a, a water, a water break.
It's up there. It's up there.
Where the cones.
Yeah, where the cones are that we put it.
They aren't yours, it belongs to somebody else.
I never said that for them.
All right, um.
Right, right near where they dumped all the tires.
Yeah. Okay, Chuck, we'll start with you.
Jeez, I don't know, you wanna start or not?
She didn't.
Um, I'm not sure if there's, uh, if, there's any update on the village's.
So. I'd be happy to give you the good news, which, uh, we did on Friday, the bonds, uh, all of the bonds that sold for that, remember that's TIG, CID, CID tip and GTT, uh, those bonds, about twenty-three million dollars in bonds sold. Those bonds are backed solely by the development itself, so there's no taxpayer obligations for those. We now have, all of that has to go to the attorney general for their review, which is under, under review now. And then we anticipate closing those on the fifteenth, so you think about kinda like a house, uh, you know, you, you agree to pay for something and then there's a date that everybody says, we're gonna do this and all the money changes and then it's really yours, so that's the closing that'll occur on October fifteenth. I don't know if there's a specific time. Private financing is in place. We'll find more views of building permits, uh, so that as soon as they can come in, make applications, you know, do the actual application for the building permit, I think they're gonna go.
Can application not be made prior to the fifteenth?
It, it, it's been, the plans and everything have been made.
So it's just a come in, payment of the, um, so would you anticipate that if things go like they, we're hoping they go, on October fifteenth, the, uh, um, that all happens like we're wanting, would a building permit be issued, um, the following week? I mean.
The building permit technically could be really issued at any time. I mean, we're doing our final review, there was some just tweaked page, tweaked, nothing's, you know, nothing big structural, nothing that's gotta go through reviews, just, there were some changes on, on. were some changes on, on material here or plant there, you know, what I would call minor revisions. And so, yeah, that, that's where you go. I think it's just a matter of the contractor, Obol Anderson is the contractor.
Just, just a wild guess, what is your wild guess on when they may have a, another ceremony of groundbreaking, because I really think we need to ask.
Whether, there's been some discussion of trying to do that, that weekend, that Friday, I don't know if that's the 18th, right there, which is race weekend.
Okay.
Right, so maybe try to do a groundbreaking that's tied around that, but obviously there will be a lot of people in town, a lot of activity, so time in there. I think, you know, there's also some, what we call off-site improvements, so there, there are some changes that happened in Village South Parkway, there are some revisions to the sewer that have to happen. I mean, none of them are, are super crazy, just, you know, they still have to be done. And so you may see, I, I think the contractors, ESS, the ones that did all the original work, that they, they could be out there even before the closing started there was. So you really will see probably two different contractors, ESS, which they're basically a road utility contractor, that's what they do, and of course, Obol Anderson is a building contractor, I think, doing a lot of structures, so that, you can see them both out there simultaneously, in different pieces.
Chuck, I apologize that we jumped all over your time, but go ahead.
Uh, no, that's great. You know what, I'm, I'm glad we're there. It's been a process, and you know what, we've been, you know, we, our, our folks that we talk to out there in the city, you know, is this going to happen? I got one, I think Friday night, that says, is this really going to happen? You know? And I'm like, you know, it's slow and it's, it's, it's taking its time, but I think that we all are going to be happy in the long run, that we've got a product that is better than what was initially proposed to us, and it's going to stand the test of time. You know, Hard Rock is a hotel where folks, it's a destination-type hotel. You know, you can go to, go to Branson and stay, or go somewhere and stay at a Holiday Inn. Well, it's a Holiday Inn, it's a bed, it's a continental breakfast, and, you know, it's very, not memorable, you know? So hopefully, we're going to get that draw here, people that are coming here. And I think race weekend is a great weekend to unveil it, as far as our groundbreaking. A lot of potential customers that weekend that'll be in town, and I'm ready, I'm ready, it's going to hit just right. We have several good months of good weather that will, in October and November, that we'll be able to get some things done, so that's great. That's all I got to say. Maybe she's...
Zach, first of all, like everybody, thank you so much. It's not that you took a couple of days to throw that event together, it's months and months and months and months of time and calls and planning and appointments and all your other work you do, so. And I know you have a lot of people to help you, but thank you so much, it's a lot of work. And being in the chamber, on the chamber too, so, and a family, so, anyway, thank you. And Tammy, thank you too, all this street work. You have a, I guess it's a, it's a gift, your job will never go away.
Job security.
All you're doing is chasing these roads, so, you do a great job, because it's a, it's a never-ending job, so do a wonderful job. David, I'd love to thank you too. Thank you for the compliment, thank you for having your kids involved in 4H. Thank you for showing your kids and all the other kids that you're going to have to respect property, to respect a cemetery, to just respect. Thank you so much, because that goes unnoticed sometimes, it's thankless, parent volunteers are expected, so thank you so much. As far as the police officer coming back, so is the police department for the staff now?
They are. Right, we don't, all of them now. We have one more that is on, that has to go to the academy, and she will be going, is it okay?
Yeah, exactly, we're going to remember she's slated.
So as far as positions, we're going to move staff.
One more comment about the dumping grounds. Are there cameras set up at, at one or two of these places, or?
There are, Jeff, I don't know if you could address, I mean, I know we, we require...
Have you caught anybody, is what I, in my question? Or has it stopped?
We haven't taken a report of criminal littering in one of those dump sites since the...
I'm sorry, I did not even hear you, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry. We haven't taken a report of criminal littering at any of the dump sites that are pretty frequent since...
What does that mean, you haven't looked at the camera, or, I don't, I don't know what that means.
No, that means there hasn't been an offense, there hasn't been, there hasn't been a dump.
So, that's a positive. I didn't know if we were going to have a, an effect of that, if somebody sees a camera, then it's good stuff.
We hope they don't see the camera.
I don't know. Well, it could go both ways, so, well, I mean, that's a good thing, I guess.
We did have, you know, the tire dumping, which was in a different location.
Get another camera.
And...
Log camera.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, that is a dump, but you may have saw on the news, I don't think we think it has any relationship, but there was a, a large problem over at KCBO, I think, 12,000 tires, something like that, you know, it was the largest dump.
Right.
You know, I, I think what typically happens in those situations, I can be wrong, but, you know, there's a lot of smaller, you know, your large national shops have contracts that are set up, and, and people kind of pick those up sometimes, and your smaller shops, you know, I come by, I've got a truck, hey, you got tires you can get rid of, you know, they're charged, you know, they have to charge by the wall, they have to charge to the customer disposal fee, you know, say it's $5, hey, I'll take them off your hand for $3, you know, I'll take care of them, and they do. Run down the road, and they're gone, right? And they made their $3 for nothing. The shop maybe has, has saved a couple of dollars, and, you know, it's unfortunate, but that's kind of how that potentially works. I mean, buildings, you know, rookin', you know, not to pick on it, a little bit, you know, off, you'll see trailers on the side of roads full of rookin' shoes, right? They drove it till the axle broke and it's old and they're upset on the side of the road, and nobody's going to come back and pick it up, and leave it set there until the city, county, state, whoever's radiating, so to kind of take away, pay the cost, and it's unfortunate.
I've kind of, and I did, but put on the camera, though, I've kind of got mixed feelings about it, about hiding it or not hiding it. I, I personally believe that I want every citizen in this city to know that we've got cameras, and that that might not be the only thing that we've got that's out there, trying to keep track of what you're doing, you know, as far as dumping, illegal dumping. So, I don't know, I've got, I've got mixed feelings about it, you know?
It's those signs that says you're on camera.
We do have some signs up that install into... I don't know if the signs, if the cameras actually are.
Exactly.
Well, like I said, I'm back to those initial signs that said you're under video surveillance. I thought that was, phew, no, I think it was ridiculous to put signs up knowing that you're not backing it up.
Now we're backing up.
Right. One more comment too, how exciting about the Hard Rock. It's going to happen, and when people see some trucks and dirt moving, that's going to, going to be exciting.
I think I always say, I, I sent an email out to all of our staff, because they, they get asked this question too, and, and it is exciting, and I have a lot of faith in it happening, you know? But I've always said, when you can walk through the front door, rent a room, and stay in the place overnight, it's a project, it's done, right? But a lot goes, a lot, thanks, and, and, you know, we're still...
That's our philosophy.
We're still, you know, you know, 16, 18 months from a door open. I mean, that's what it's going to take to build it and do all the other things. I think all the pieces are in the works, and that's great.
Same thing to Zach, thank you for everything, and sorry about the rain, you know, took a minute and a half.
Chief's fault.
I think the chief leader has got a real good thing going over there with that Serenity Park, because we did lose a lot of our customers, unfortunately, but that's really good, I think. I did go by there and look at it Saturday, and they're doing a really cool job, so thank you for that, chief.
Zach, would you just go over the details of the October 8th, the summer spring, please, and do sooner or... I know they said that 4H was going to be open from the 9 to noon, is that the entire time, or will there be other opportunities?
So we'll, the city will try and organize something that go on during the 9 to noon as a dividend, they're trying to get some supervisors, volunteers coming in after that. So 4H, the way that, that the partnership is going to be kind of structured, it's, it's a 4H project. They're the lead agency on that, and the city's acting as, we're able to get the word out, we secure access through 100, 145, the quarter there, like we did last time, and worked with the church, so they know that people can, can access it through their property. So folks who want to participate in it can do it that way as well, so ever, until Mr. Street doesn't have 40 people coming in through his house getting out of that site. So we're going to be spreading the awareness about it, giving kudos to 4H for being the lead agency and pushing forward to happen, and then trying to get someone to coordinate volunteers from after 4H is gone. Essentially, it'll be the same, a rinse and repeat of the project that we did earlier in the spring, where we'll have, we'll, we'll try to bring some materials down there, the church, the municipal church has said that they'll, they'll provide their equipment, and their, kind of ground-stemmed guy that they did last time was a big, big help if you, if you were there. So, yeah, it'll be essentially a repeat of what we did in the spring, only this time partying with 4H, and they'll have some, they'll have a bigger present at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the day, that we'll see what we can put together for later on this day. So October 12th will be that day, that's a Saturday. In between now and then, I know that we'll be doing some work with, we'll be reaching out to some of the other interested parties, NAACP chapter, the 73rd Board, obviously, to make awareness, to make sure everybody's on board moving forward, and, you know, hopefully after that, get some, what, uh, some kind of rededication ceremony to the site, maybe around Veterans Day. But there are some of these details that we do want to get squared away, but some of the interested parties, to make sure that we're not stepping on anyone's toes.
One other thing that I would bring up, and I know we have very limited control of it, but with everything looking really positive toward the Hard Rock Hotel and a possible groundbreaking race weekend, it just brought to my thought process the traffic during race weekend and how that's always shut down, and that'll be a huge obstacle for folks who are going to stay at the hotel on the race weekend. And I just thought, if we're having an event that weekend at that location, it might be a good opportunity to open those communication lines with KDOT, I would patrol and talk to them about, let's start that process of scheduling when they will be there, and making a use of it to our folks on the side.
And we've had some preliminary discussions, the chief, you know, at each, at each race, there's some, you know, they have some discussion, but they certainly are aware that something has to change in that traffic path, so people can access from the south, and they can't just stop people, you know, without a problem, so. It will take some challenges, but I think it will be nice. It is, I will say, at least in my time, it's better than it used to be. Because it used to be, they just put barricades at River View, and that was it, we, you weren't going anywhere. I mean, now they close it off at times, and then they reopen and close it again. It's, in my opinion, much better than it used to be, as far as access to the front. You know, you get, maybe you have a lot of, a lot of cars coming in out there at one time, trying to work with it, so, but yes, we will keep going.
One last, would you say ditto to all of the things?
Right.
Yeah, I know how you feel, right? Ditto to all the compliments that I had, and David, thank you very much, appreciate your feedback. If we could somehow make sure that you get them load down in the lowest block of church property before we did, I have the impression that it's going to be kept, but I guess probably the wet weather is the lowest block too, so if that can be load before the volunteers come in, it could be helpful as well. Chief, one of your skills for rainmaking will come in very handy in the, in the drought years, so we will make use of those in the future, we appreciate it. Also, I want to thank you for your professionalism in your department, and the way you've, you've managed your department, drawing your department into it, very substantial, and something we can be very, very proud of. And I was bragging about you to someone the other day, that with your recent designation, Mike, what was the recent?
Chief Fire Office.
Chief Fire Office designation, it's, it's just really nice to have a professional department, and say that we can just go brag about, I really appreciate your dedication and passion for your landwork, and we greatly appreciate you and our service. Thank you very much. I think that is about it, and we've got some good things coming.
Chief, how many, how many cities in Windup County have ISO 2?
One.
One. How many cities in this county begin with E?
Just noting something.
Probably the smallest community that's ever had ISO 2 rating, but we're pretty close, it's a very small number to have pulled that off. And I mean, on a grand spectrum, things we look at, our two much larger neighbors maintain theirs from where they were, and actually, kind of dropped ours one, but two digits, and we're two tenths of a point off from the one, but that's a multimillion dollar investment to get those last two-digit points, and just, it's not worth it, just going, I'm, I'm like, now, now's the challenge of keeping that rate.
I really can't see the issue of everybody being the last one, because I'm the last one. David, thank you very much, I really appreciate your compliments, and thank you for your volunteers and getting the 4Hers together to do that, that's really not, really is nice. Chief Quintero, once again, congratulations on all the work you did. Tammy, thank you very much. Ben, thank you for being with us tonight. Mike and Zach, I already, I already gave Zach a compliment today on Facebook about his, his overseeing the project, once again, but thank you all, thank you, council, we are adjourned.